We're in progress.
Thank you, Carissa.
No problem.
Okay, so I'd like to call the May twenty second Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order. For all those that can stand, the public opinion. I'd like to do this.
The United States of America and security public for which stands on a nation under God. You can do this all through another reading and just.
Okay, first order of business is, is there any public comment tonight? There's shot any public comment? Very done, we'll put a couple of comments. So we move on to recognition, so it's a great, it was a great night to recognize some students with some outstanding achievement. Nice to see the families here as well, so real happy that we can get started, and I'll turn it over to Jeff to leave the discussion.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Bowman, and I'm gonna turn it over to our interim principal, Mrs. Kelly, who's going to start off with some information about our two middle school cave recognition students. Some, Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Super, well, I would like to take the time to recognize Cassidy O'Brien. So Cassidy's here with her family this evening. Cassidy is a member of the Osprey team, she's one of the recipients of the Cave Recognition Award this evening. This is a summary as provided by her staff, her team. Over the course, and I'm gonna rechief what they have shared, over the course of her middle school years, Cassidy has grown into a student that her peers look up to and her teachers depend on. Her leadership qualities both in and out of the classroom are inspiring. She consistently works hard to achieve straight A's in all of her classes and faculty commendations every semester. She strives to always do more and do better than is expected of her. She never settles for less than her best, however, when asked what drives her to succeed, might be surprised by her answer. My time spent, this is Cassidy, my time spent studying for test quizzes was not given the recognition to make me satisfied, she says. With an empty feeling inside, I made a drastic decision and shifted my perspective. I was not gonna follow in the footsteps of those before me. My purpose was to be a leader and guide people around me to make a positive impact on both their community and school. Though my name written out on paper was Cassidy O'Brien, the last six letters do not define me as a person, what my actions and attitude do. Cassidy takes this message apart in everything she does. Cassidy has participated in orchestra all four years of middle school and takes her lessons very seriously. In eighth grade, she joins the musical club with the hopes of interacting with students and other caveous thinking and positive impact with them. It's forced Cassidy, someone who thrives as part of the team, and this was evident when she earned a starting spot as the only seventh grader on the basketball team. In eighth grade, she was chosen as a team captain and helped work with her teammates to not only improve their skills, but to also teach by example, helping her coach organize donations to bring to imposing schools' toy drive. Outside of school, Cassidy participates in two other basketball teams, including AAU, Storm, Otis Norwich. And along with basketball, she has played both lacrosse and soccer for the past ten years on the Eastline travel teams. She continues her leadership skills on the field. These characteristics and her skill level earned her a spot in the All-Star lacrosse game, which only the best in the state took part in. Her soccer team won their league this past fall, and she received Southeast Connecticut Award, which was given to a player who demonstrated good behavior, teamwork, and soccer expertise. Cassidy also volunteers with a program called Miracle League, which allows children with disabilities to have opportunities to play in sport. Being a good communicator as well as a courageous person in both class and sports are characteristics that led teachers to nominate Cassidy for the Leaders Club in seventh grade. In eighth grade, staffing changes resulted in the club ending. Cassidy worked to find a staff member to start the lead squad at Elm's end. And then, just as a sidebar, she did come to the board and Mr. Good and I, and proposed that we read safety club, and to her credit, we agreed to do that. There, she's able to use her voice to speak on a variety of topics and issues in an effort to make changes and make change to Elm's atmosphere for the better. Being a good public speaker and always coming up with new ways to enhance the school system, Cassidy was also asked to take part in the wellness committee meeting to get students' perspective on how to improve the lunchroom, wellness center, and life arts. With zero absences, straight A's, a bright outlook, and involvement in a variety of activities with different people, Cassidy has proven to be an individual and a leader. Whether it is having a positive impact on those around her or always trying to be the best version of herself, she causes others to want to do the same. Cassidy spends, spreads positivity throughout our school and community. She is and will continue to be a leader and a role model in Eastline.
Right, Karen. Why don't we do, Josh, recognition, and then we're gonna have them both come on.
Perfect.
Okay.
Our next recipient is JP Antonina, and he is a member of the Ospreys. JP is a natural leader on our team. He is an exempt thirty student, a scholar, as well as person of character and leadership. JP is enthusiastic about his education and encourages the strive among his peers. He is a conscientious student who readily contributes to class discussions and takes pride in challenging himself to further his learning. JP takes great pride in his academics and excels in all classes. He has maintained an A-plus average in all classes throughout his middle school years. In addition to academic excellence, JP simplifies the characteristics of citizenship, integrity, and independence. He goes out of his way to include all students equally, encourages positive climate through his own behaviors. When asked about his leadership skills, JP said that leading by example has always been an unconscious goal he has worked toward, and he finds pride in showing his peers how to be the best versions of themselves. He does this by presenting himself as a role model in a variety of sports and activities. In school, JP is on Elm's varsity basketball and Leaders Club. He also plays on Eastline Basketball Travel Team and Eastline Senior Football Team. Outside of Eastline, JP plays for the Nightmare Football Seven v Seventeen and the Connecticut Warriors Baseball Team. These teams travel around the country to play against the best competition in the United States. Despite his successes in athletics, JP says he is most proud of his academic accomplishments. With such a busy schedule, he consciously makes his schoolwork a priority. He shares that he has an extreme dedication to assuring that his grades stand out. He made it a goal to never finish with any, without anything below ninety-four percent, and so far, he has achieved that every year at Eastline Middle School, consistently earning him faculty commendations. JP also represented the Osprey team in a school-wide spelling bee this year. He participates in Elm's choir and was given the lead role in all plays through elementary school, showing his creative side as well. Outside of school, JP continues to be a role model by volunteering at sports camps for elementary schools. He regularly volunteers at St. Agnes Church, his local parish, reading scriptures and passages for mass and participating in productions that demonstrate the beliefs of his religion. After graduating from Eastline Middle School, JP is hoping to attend Rosemary Hall, a prestigious college preparatory high school. JP is an outstanding member of both of our school and Eastline community who has a bright future ahead of them. Congratulations.
That's in JP, JP, you can smile.
By the phone over here. Maybe, uh, maybe a picture could be, um, did you want to link them? I don't get it.
I got it here.
Screen, keep one of our board. And I'll keep checking this, okay? JP, congratulations. Thank you. For product, you should meet your. Cassidy, congratulations. For brothers, well done. My, let's get a lecture.
Well, Lauren.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Next, gonna turn it over to our other Mrs. Kelly, high school principal, who's gonna talk about our high school recipients, Mrs. Kelly.
Thanks. I'll be reading the first one for the beginning of the by the students and counselors. I'm pleased to present Mahira Hassan, who received the Leadership Award. Mahira has challenged herself throughout her high school education with rigorous force work and has strived to be an active member and leader in a variety of extracurricular activities, as is evident in her ability to be academically successful while also volunteering and being an active member in clubs and athletics. Mahira has been the secretary for Student Senate for the past two years and an active member for three. She truly enjoys contributing to events the entire school participates in and strives to make changes for issues mentioned by the student body. Through her role in Senate, she was chosen to be her class's Board of Education representative. Mahira also takes great pride in her role in the Yale Center for Clinical Investigation Internship. During her time in this internship, she has not only taken every opportunity to listen to lectures from Yale professionals, but also began a group project focused on creating a webpage and advertisements to emphasize the importance of youth clinical research. Currently, she is working with her group to move forward in creating this website and propose it to the Translation of Science Conference held in April. In addition to her passion for these roles and experiences, Mahira volunteers at Flanders Elementary School, was the secretary of the Red Cross Club, is the secretary of Key Club, is an active member of the Shoreline Leos Club, and is the co-president of the Diversity Club. And on top of all that, she also participates in lacrosse. She is a well-rounded and open-minded leader within the Eastline.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly, well, next turn to Connor.
Pleased to present Connor Tukey for the Cave Leadership Award. He has proven academic success and has earned high honors distinction in a rigorous college preparatory curriculum. He is ambitious and loves the process of learning. Connor is a member of the Spanish Honor Society and a student held in high regard by faculty for his willingness to help others and his aptitude for elevating classroom discussion. Equally important to academics, Connor has also shown a commitment to extracurricular activities and enjoys staying active. He's well-rounded and stands out with his natural leadership skills and strong work ethic. He is a valuable member of service clubs such as Peers Reaching Out, Student Senate, and Key Club. Connor has worked for the betterment of our school community and community at large by participating in events such as the Eastline Blood Drive, the Out of Darkness Walk, the College Fair, beach cleanups, and Miracle League activities like I Can Bike. As a result of his drive and dedication, Connor was selected to attend the Key Club Leaders Conference last fall. As if that is not enough, Connor is also an integral member of our C-sports such as soccer, basketball, and baseball. Additionally, he's played through the Regional Travel Baseball Team, Connecticut Crush Club Team. He has earned recognition as honorable mention, All-ECC Player, and recommendation for the Eastern Connecticut Conference Leadership Workshop. Lastly, Connor is an outstanding role model who enjoys working with the Miracle League Baseball Program, Little League Baseball, and as a camp counselor through Eastline Parks and Rec.
Hey, Virginia, Connor, and I'm here, if you can come up. I'm open. You can right from the. Congratulations. You're a well-minded, congratulations, Mrs. Kelly. All right, we'll get a picture of this guy. Thank you very much. Any thanks to everyone who's here tonight, this is a prestigious recognition that we do yearly, and we really enjoy recognizing our students, so congratulations to the board, thank you. So, so congratulations to all, really great to see. Our next order of business is actually Executive Session, which is a great time that everyone can leave quietly and not, not even be, be seen, so we're gonna, let me, I'll first make a move to enter Executive Session to discuss the final candidate of Director Athletics and the proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
And staying, okay, we are in Executive Session.
And with the board, we're gonna go to the next room, so.
Yeah.
Everyone stay here, our audience stay here, we're gonna, the board, we're gonna go to the next room.
So, probably wasn't clear on that.
Okay, here, Amy, here, seat right here, too. So, I know you're giving a report, yeah, right? You're gonna sit right next to me here, no pressure.
Thank you.
Please. Great, thanks so much. So, we're coming back from Executive Session, which was to discuss the final candidate for the Director of Athletics and the proposed non-union and unaffiliated benefit wage agenda. The first order of business is approval of minutes from the May first Board of Ed Special Meeting. Any comments or changes? Your motion to. Fifty minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the May first, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Special Meeting is, was happening.
Well, second.
No, any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. I'm staying. Uh, Lisa, Jamie.
That's it, too?
Yep. Okay, so those minutes, yes, now we move on to Special Reports, and we have our selectmen representative. We have Ann, thank you for coming.
Yeah, very needy agenda. I'll be a big event here. May eighteenth, there was the vote on the referendum before the budget, and as you all know, it passed. And interestingly, more folks voted this year than last. The total number of votes is one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight compared to the shy six hundred last year. I was glad to see that, you know, that people are engaged and paying attention and getting out there, so that was a good thing. And interestingly, same percentages, that it comes out to about sixty-two percent in favor and about thirty-eight percent against, and it didn't change, but the six hundred voted versus the twelve hundred, so. So that was interesting. Charter revision is coming up, there is a second public here on June sixth. There will be a draft report from the Commission ahead of that June sixth date, so that you can read about the changes that are fully proposed. And then, on the June twenty-first, the Commission will present its findings and report drafted for two quarters left. So, some interesting things there, and that's a whole half-hour conversation, so, so we'll get into that down, down the road. I just wanted to mention that I was very pleased to see that the Eastline Police Department was awarded both at the same time Tier One and Tier Two accreditation status. And this article appeared in the paper as well, you may, you may have caught it. So, if you recall, in twenty twenty, there was the Police Accreditation Act enacted in Hartford, and felt again lots of requirements, additional requirements for their, for the police departments. So, the last two years, our, our, our department really did a great job of organizing resources, looking at their policies, with special counsel as well, and have really done a great job of meeting the requirements ahead of time. I think they're the first department in Southeast Connecticut that has been, gotten that Tier Two accreditation. So, I think that's an important, you know, stepping stone for, for any department, and particularly ours, which is a younger department. So, good to, good to know about it. Let's see, as you all know, we've already started the painful process of the I ninety-five exit seventy-four of the work by the state DOT. And the best place to go is our town website, which you can then get the link to the I ninety-five eastline.com site for information. It, you know, the first, this first year won't be so bad, and we'll see how it goes. I've heard, too, that if, um, the weather holds, and we have a mild through winter, and that we could actually shorten this, this process, so I'm hope, forever hopeful, so, so that we, that that does happen. Town hall hours, just for your information, will change, this was an administrative decision, that was a sliding decision. But it is good to know eight to five, Monday through Thursday, and Friday hours, eight o'clock to eleven-thirty. So, we're kind of, we're following some other towns that are, that are either don't have Friday hours or have partially, you know, hours. So, this was all approved, all the employees have joined in, unions are agreed that this, this is workable. So, people's hours don't change, it's just the hours aggregate that the, that the office is open. And it affects town hall and Parks and Rec. So, let's see. Last, lastly, a couple of, a couple of big events coming up. We have Memorial Day events, the Sunday, next Sunday night, which is the, um, May, the twentieth of May. There's the vigil at Liberty Green, and I think I, I was assigned to head extra tissue duty here last May, and I, I, I recommended it then, and I recommend it again, it's a wonderful, solemn thing, but very important, you know, for that particular holiday. And of course, the parade happens the next day at two o'clock. The vigil, the night before on Sunday is at seven-thirty PM, and it's very brief, it's maybe forty-five minutes. So, and then June sixth, or June fourth, Saturday, June fourth, lots of Connecticut Trail Days events coming up at Darrell, Darrell Pond Trails, and also Asabachi Hills. So, a lot, you know, the summer is, is pretty much begun, so lots of events going forward. Any questions?
Any questions, Rand?
What time are the Connecticut Trail events?
Those are at varying times, and the town website has really good information on each of them. I think at Asabachi Hills is like three separate times in the morning, and depending on how much trail you wanna walk, or watch or whatever, and the one over at Asabachi, I'm sorry, at Darrell Pond, I think it's a three-mile, that's a three-mile walk, that's probably not difficult. But we know we've seen that all the time when you go hiking on the trailheads, right, not difficult.
And, um, the twenty-eighth, are we honoring our veterans, is that part of the?
So, for Memorial Day, it's really remembering those who have lost their lives in service of countries. So, so that's that event, that vigil, and local veterans, for this, the local veterans organizations, and many youth groups participate in that that evening. And of course, the parade is. Certainly doing the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any little questions for you? Thanks, I appreciate it. Next, we move on to our middle school students, we have Sam, Sam and Catherine, the updates.
All right, good evening, everyone, I'm Simon, as well, eighth grade, I'm just using insight on what we have been doing and what will be taking place at Elm's. So, coming up on June eighth, we have our beach, our fun day for the eighth grade, I have a hook switch. It's kind of like, like a field trip format, students are paid a fifty-five-dollar fee, which includes the bus, the ice cream truck, the food truck, and the cost of all the activities. By cost of all the activities, I mean, because the school hired a company, Eastern Mountain Sports, and the company is basically setting up activities all revolving around the team building, sponsoring, you know, DJing that event. So, same day. And then, that same day, back at the middle school, grades five through seven will be having their fun day. And it's all gonna be still like team-building activities, gonna be run by teachers the whole day, too. Um, pretty cool, the PTA was a, what do you, like a teacher wish list kind of thing, with teachers. And the teachers were able to request like items and other things that they wanted, and the PTA would never have refused that, teachers. And on April twenty-first, we had our PTA-sponsored promo dance. It was a glow and like neon themed dance, so through those Gretzky and neon, there was like glow stick and other stuff. It was in the cafeteria, and then there were two dances, one for the fifth and sixth grade, and the seventh and eighth grade, they were on the same day. And like I said, there was glow sticks, DJ, there was a photo booth with props, and there was a small concession stand, like snack floor or something like that. We had our GOV, students competed in a geography trivia game, like a geography trivia-based competition in their silver plates class, and then finalists were ever heave over, were able to compete in a school-wide competition. On May twelfth, we had our step-up days of the fourth graders, so the fourth graders from all the elementary schools in the district were able to, like, take out of tours and ask questions to students in the Leaders Club, who also were doing tours. And basically, the students got to familiarize themselves with the school, and it was pretty cool. And then, um, we have our class night coming up on June thirteenth, for our class's graduation. So, students will be giving like speeches, they're debenting with the national anthem, and basically the same graduation place. And then, kind of closer to that time, the eighth grade will have their breakfast, along with getting your votes, they'll be able to do their year group signing, so it's gonna be a photo, photo booth then, too. So, that's very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Catherine Chendo, and I am also an eighth grader graduating this year. As graduation approaches, we are all, we are all anxiously awaiting summer's arrival as the new high school year moves closer. We recently selected our elective, our elective courses for next year, along with everything our class level assignments. Along with course selections, eighth graders also had to make the biggest, big decision about who they wanted on their ninth grade Senate. The, the students who feel as though they would like a chance to be on the Senate next year got four teacher signatures and fifteen student signatures. And then, we, the student body, voted on the top ten people who we thought would be best fit for disposition last year. Also, recently, over the last two, Monday through Tuesdays, the middle school has had the S-Box with math, ELA, and for eighth and sixth graders, and NGSS for science. The S-Box went smoothly, and students who did not finish in the designated two hours have been working hard to make the, the designated class. Um, and then, continuing on the Leaders Club and PTA, we're trying to bring some fun and spirit into our school last time with the Decades Day theme, Spirit Day. Eighth graders for sixties, seventh grader seventies, sixth graders eighties, and fifth graders nineties. It was so cool to see all of these different and unique styles being displayed by students and how they interpreted each one. This Spirit Day brought a lot of laughs and fun, and it was a very successful day with lots of spirit and style. Adding on to the Leaders Club Step-Up Day on June twelfth, the Leaders Club is also planning on visiting the elementary schools in the coming weeks. We're planning on visiting Nyanic Center in Flanders on May thirty-first and Lilly D Union on June seventh. Our goal is to ease in with the fourth graders' worries about moving up to a bigger school and answer any questions they have incoming eighth graders. On Leaders Club, some other clubs that are currently going on, our gardening club, working on the butterfly garden in the school to add some color. Camp Elm Spring Running and Conditioning Club, seven-day intramural basketball, and many, many more. The middle school has, is also holding an hallschool assembly coming up on May twenty-fifth, where an artist at the investments is going to be coming to talk about social emotional goals and how they express their emotions and feelings through art.
Great, thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Sam, any questions?
Me.
Great, and best of luck in graduation coming up shortly, thanks. So then, we, we're moving on to the high school student representative, and you're doing double duty today, winning congratulations on your award.
Okay, so most of my report today is junior news, because Manat and Brendan are obviously participating in ECC's pro track, which is going well. So, the first thing that I have to report about is junior prom, which was on May sixth, that Water's Edge, and it was a big success. My Senate, actually, we made some sort of like deal, so before spring break, tickets were seventy-five dollars, and afterwards, they were eighty-five. We made a lot of extra money from that, which is gonna work towards prom next year. We had around two hundred fifty guests, and there were not as many food options as we initially thought, but it was, it turned out okay, and we booked the DJ from Winter Ball, and it turned out good, and we got a lot of positive feedback from that.
We know another DJ if you need.
So, next thing is National Honor Society. They just accepted their first wave of juniors, and the second wave will be in the fall, but the first wave's induction is going to be June fifth at seven PM. AP exams are over, so that took away a lot of our stress, and that went well mostly. There was the AP Lit digital exam, which was digital for the first time. I actually took that one, and I personally did really like it online, because handwriting three essays is not that nice. But, um, unfortunately, a few students did have issues, so they had to take the test again, which is very rough.
You hand them visually?
So, originally, the exam was supposed to be digital, but some students got kicked out of the program. Some students, their work just submitted, so they had to retake it on paper.
Okay. That was a college board issue?
No.
No. It's a report. Really tough, and I I know, um, I don't think East Lime students were the only students that that happened to across the country, so.
Yeah, actually, they're better than most.
Yeah.
Did they get extra credit or anything?
Next thing is officer speeches for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year senate took place on Wednesday. And voting was done in history classes on Thursday and Friday. The results were uploaded today, I am pretty sure, but we got feedback from students saying that they in a lot of their history classes, they weren't actually given the survey. So I know Ms. Brush is talking to Ms. Jenkins about that to see if there's anything that can be done. Um, Key Club also held their officer speeches for next school year, but their results have not come out yet. Um, peers reaching out or Pro also just finished their round of nominations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And those students will be added to Google Classroom and um, scheduled interviews for that. Um, a while before prom took place, we had our E O H S talent show, and that was a very fun event. I went with my friends and I had a very good time. And I got a lot of positive feedback from that. Students were saying that it was a very fun event for only five dollars. It was very fun to watch all the students perform. Um, the library has an update now, so the students need to sign a library pass before signing in. And I think that does make it a lot easier for the librarians because students come in and out without signing in, and I feel like that's a good thing. But some students complained about that, but that's everyone's, you know, no one's gonna agree all the time.
Yeah.
Um, we had our N G S S testing, which there was a couple problems with that because for some reason the school computers started updating while we were taking the exam. But it saved our progress, so we were able to log back in and continue perfectly. So that was okay.
Something technology.
Yeah.
Um, the class award ceremony is June first, so students that um, earned class awards will be invited to that. Tomorrow.
Like senior, like seniors are different than the.
I know it's.
No, yeah.
They're all combined, okay.
Um, tomorrow, cultural awareness has a food festival, which is combined with the art expo from six to eight P M. So we'll be having food from several different restaurants around town, and it is combined with the traditional art expo. Point of that is to introduce foods from different cultures. Um, senior prom is June third at the Hall Room, and tickets are on sale this week. I think sales are over the end of this week, I believe.
Thursday.
Um, so junior, the junior senate is planning for senior prom and other events, and we are now looking for venues. So we are looking to do corn starboard for prom and doing the dinner dance in the commons, hopefully, if we can get approval. Um, for parking spots, originally, we decided that we would extend the senior parking lot for next year to the spots behind the track. And we got approval for that, and we thought it would be a good idea to allow students to be able to purchase extra raffle tickets, but there was an article written in the saga about how that isn't fair to students who can't afford extra raffle tickets, so we got rid of that. And now it is just one ticket per student, which is going to be fifty dollars. Um.
And that's because there's not enough, there's more demand for spots than there are. Yeah, okay. But you're saying you expanded the number of.
Yes, so now next year, there will be more spots.
Yeah, great.
And the class of twenty twenty-four booked the Stanford East Lime Day on July fifteenth with a game for throwing coins into glasses where if you win, you can take the glasses home with you. And we are also working on partnering with the Shoreline Leo's Club to have a car wash fundraiser over the summer. Um, I know senior students are now applying for speaking at graduation if they're interested in giving a speech. And last thing, this Sunday, girls varsity recruit one state champions. And the whole team won overall points because so many crew like votes on that team medal, first time since two thousand.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Scott. Did you saw those trophies we were carrying around earlier? Okay, it's phenomenal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Welcome to here, make a run for it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that closes our special reports. Moving on, we have one consent agenda item. And here a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second.
Oh, uh, we already second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Abstain.
And so.
Yeah, Jill. So, okay, uh, consent agenda passes. That was, for those of you at home, uh, is a recommendation to. It's to authorize a superintendent to sign a one-year contract renewal with the school medical advisor, Dr. B J Sigand for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, so now we'll move on to the discussion action items personnel, and the first agenda item is the proposed appointment of a director of athletics.
Yes, it brings me uh, great pleasure uh, to introduce to the board Kevin Marko, uh, who is our finalist for the athletic director position. After a comprehensive process and search, um, Kevin emerged uh, from the group and just did a phenomenal job through all three rounds of our process. Uh, I think we are lucky to have him join us. He's the current uh, A D and Killingley, and he's been in Killingley for many years. Um, he's done a phenomenal job there, and I think he's going to elevate our sports programs. Um, we have great sports programs, gonna take it to the next level for his work with our coaches here. So uh, I'll ask the board to, for a motion to um, approve of Kevin as our new agent.
We will make a motion to approve the appointment of Kevin Marko for the position of a one point O F T E Director of Athletics. I don't have a start date in here, though.
July one.
July one, twenty twenty-three. Second.
Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Abstain. Congratulations. Very, very excited to have you. If you wanna say if you were very excited.
Introduce your wife and your your daughter as well, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So excited to get started. Um, superintendent, you'll be every step along the way, incredibly professional. Obviously, a very serious process, and I'm very proud. I started, I'll introduce and thank and thank them for all the support. My wife Carrie is here. One of the question was how, what would keep her happy? I think she's actually wanted me. It's a win-win for everybody. Seriously, I'm very, very excited to get started. East Lime is a tremendous food district with a tremendous history in athletics and um, just the energy that I that I'm going to bring to the district and the expectations and the standards. Well, state championships, those are two of my favorite words. That is incredible accomplishment. You're the best at what you do in the state, and that is hard work, dedication throughout the entirety for years and years and years of a young person's life. And I've said many times, I'm in the kid business. My job is to give our kids, our kids the very best experience. We owe it to them. Or they get four years of high school. That's it. That's all they get. It's our job to make sure that those four years are particularly memorable. Most of them will not go on to play in college, let alone professionally, and so it's our job, all of our jobs, to make sure that there, it's going to be just, just a great, great four years for them and to make this community proud. You already are proud. I know you are uh, with your sports, your teams, and we're just gonna take it to the next level. So again, thank you so much for your trust in me.
Welcome.
Some part committee members are here too. I mean, Terry's back there, and Chris Olson was on our committee, and some other folks, and uh, we had a robust uh, process. So I know Terry's excited and ready to go, and uh, Kevin and uh, and Terry will be working on closely together, so. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you all get home.
Yes.
My uh, for Mary, I want to take the unaffiliated.
Yeah. So the next um, order of business is discussion action, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule. Marianne is gonna take us that.
All right, I gotta find where I am with the agenda, because of that one. Bear with me one second, but basically, I mean, just uh, the overall advice, have the summary there. In the increases for um, most everyone was two and a half percent. We have uh, one individual um, that was brought in um, in our uh, special department that was brought in at our lower salary level, so we're trying to get that person up to a market rate, especially when there's some assistance um, underneath that person, which is close in salaries, that one is getting a four and a half percent raise. And then the only other changes are because of the minimum rate, minimum wage increase. So June first, it goes to fifteen dollars. But then it starts changing every January, so starting January of twenty twenty-four, it will change, and it will change every January after that, and it's based on the employment cost index with of June thirtieth. So January's increase will be based on June thirtieth's index, which does not come out until probably sometime in August. So um, based on the previous year's indexes, period, previous orders, it's been over a five percent increase. So with the lunch recess assistance, we decided to um, eliminate their first step because it was below minimum wage. And then we made the second step. Um, we estimated about five point two percent and brought that to fifteen dollars and eighty-four cents. So that's really the only other major change, so that we just um, didn't have to make a mid-year change to salaries, and we could budget appropriately. So. Questions?
Any questions?
Sounds like good planning, so I mean.
I would like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-one proposed non-union unaffiliated benefit wage schedule.
For your second?
Second.
Thanks, Kate. All uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. Abstain. Okay, motion passes. Great. Moving on to discussion action item, finance facilities and community, and we have uh, Dave here for the Miracle League Field Phase Two Discussion Action Item.
Yes, you all heard, yeah, about uh, when Dave came and presented a couple of weeks ago, um, and he has uh, gotten us the the plans and specs, which have been provided to Dr. Lund as well. Um, he's here for any questions? Anything else Dave you want to share?
No, just the civil engineers. We're out on uh, Thursday to do their work, and I should have that planned here shortly, so. Other than that, we're ready to get the funding in place, and we're ready to go as soon as we have our approvals. Here we go.
And we wanted, we needed to bring this back, so, because we do need an approval from the board to move on, so that was why we have this here. Sorry, Chris.
Correct. I don't, Chris, if you have anything you wanted to add to, or.
No, it's a minor concept. You did, Dave, and uh, and otherwise, it's really good.
Um, it's being paid for by the Miracle League. The Miracle League is paying for that to go.
Um, I can't, I did hear the question.
Oh.
How much it's costing the Miracle?
Oh, it's gonna be between two hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars.
Okay, that's just curious. Let's see first, thank you. No, I mean, they pay for it, for sure.
Any other questions?
It's a restroom and a storage facility that's being added. Is that what's happening?
That is correct.
Okay.
Go your motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Miracle League Phase Two uh, construction as presented. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Oh, yeah.
Just.
James, yeah, 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 Jamie abstain.
As a director on that, I'd like to.
Yep. Okay, motion passes, Dave. Thank you so much. Thanks for all the. Miracle League is doing it. Yeah, it's very cool. Amazing how quickly we're moving. Okay, uh, next item is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for discussion. I think uh, Jeff had a few updates.
Yeah, just um, since uh, great news, you know, with the budget uh, passing, uh, I just wanted to circle back um, on this. Um, we talked at the last meeting, we're gonna reduce to one elementary position, you know, at Niantic Center. Um, I want to make sure the board is aware, we did um, go through the schedule for the technology teachers. We're still planning on going to re, how much technology teachers down to two, and we can still fit in the schedule. Took some work, and two of our 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 teachers, our staff members did a great job helping us out. They got great minds for it. Um, and one was from Mr. Provo's building, and one was from uh, Mr. Showman's building. And um, helped us figure it out. So uh, we are able to spread two of them across the three buildings and cover all the technology classes. Um, important for next year. So that's good news, because I know that question had come up a while back. The other thing um, I wanted, and we can, if we want, as we move into, you know, we can bring back that full list again of, you know, what what's uh, you know, where it landed on everything. Uh, but those were the were the two that were um, the bigger discussion items. One thing I wanted to bring forward because the par union had reached out to me, uh, we had established, uh, those that were part of the negotiations committee. We had extended uh, an M O U with them for a year to um, if they cover for more than two hours, cover for a teacher, we asked, uh, if we're short of staff, if we're short of sub, and we ask a pair of professionals to cover uh, for a teacher for more than two hours, we pay them an extra thirty dollars above what they're they're getting for the day. Um, very fair. Um, they asked us to extend that M O U for another year. Um, I'm in full support of that, um, but I wanted to bring that to the board and make sure the board was uh, you know, in support of that, and I can go back to Chris Marjack, the union president, and say that, you know, we agreed to extend it for another year. Something everybody's in favor of.
I wholeheartedly support that, and I'm curious, is there a reason why it's like a year-to-year M O U versus just a standard practice and part of our?
Yeah, we're gonna make it one more year because what, we're gonna go into negotiations again with them, and we thought it was just should become part of the negotiation process um, and be discussing on that way, so it's clean. So that's the main uh, the main reason. So.
Should we have an idea after that happens?
Um, not as much this year as it did the previous year. Uh, yeah, there there is that issue of, you know, the more we do it, we're kind of robbing Peter to keep Paul, remember, because we're taking them from the work that they're supposed to be doing sort of thing, so that's not always as good. So it's kind of a, you know, one of those last resorts pieces, but it does happen regularly. Um, but it's good compensation. It's important compensation for them. They're going above and beyond. They're helping us out, so they should be rewarded for that. So I think that will probably come up in negotiations for further conversations too. So I just wanted to bring that forward and let you know that that's uh, was my record. So I'll get back in touch with Chris Marsh. I can let her know that or is in support of that and move forward. Um, so that was it. I kind of just wanted to have an open dialogue again about, you know, the budgets. Um, if we wanna you know, we'll do some more work, obviously, have some more conversations as we move into the summer. We'll keep you apprised as well when we hit our June fifth and our June nineteenth meeting to see, you know, where our final kind of kindergarten numbers are coming in, especially over the summer. And I'm assuming like that, you know, potentially have some more discussions of the, you know, depending changes. So. That's pretty much.
Any questions?
It's just that we were so lucky with the winter and the heat and all of the snow and all of those things.
Yeah, just, yes, it's
So lucky.
Help to eliminate that deficit, and all the good work that Mary on everybody did. So.
Jeff, I had a question somewhat related to this, but a non-lapsing account. What's the word?
Yes, so that's down in the town's hands. We sent it down to the board selection, and then it.
I haven't seen anything yet, but we um, we didn't have a meeting. Uh, we we don't have this meeting, our second meeting of the month, so it probably will show up uh, first meeting in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll circle back with uh, with Kevin.
Yeah, I think I mentioned something about that, in my report, so I think they they're expecting to see something.
Okay, and that goes, just remind me, goes to the board of selectmen and then goes to board of finance. Is that the order?
Yes, that's what it should do. Yeah, yeah. So we we proposed it.
Okay, great. Lots of questions?
Okay.
Um. The next uh, agenda topic, discussion action on student-based healthcare, uh, student-based healthcare partnership. Which Jeff, I think you.
Yeah, I put in the uh weekly update, I'm excited to report that um we have a partner, um CHC uh Community Health Center has agreed to partner with us. Um so we can um begin, uh we're starting the high schools, we're starting small, um and then hopefully grow from there, and it'll just be mental health support services, not in place of, just in addition to what we currently have in the high school, so kind of like an added bonus, and this is, once it gets established and we start to um have kids that are, you know, being seen or partaking in it, um that's when we would be charging family insurance plans and so forth to offset the costs of it. So there'll be some initial fees upfront, so uh it's a rough estimate right now, but it's about twenty-two thousand of initial fees to get it going, and I think it's well worth uh us establishing it and then growing it from there, and eventually I'd like to bring, we don't like to bring in medical services as well. I'm gonna have that done too. So, and at both high school and the middle school, uh so I think it's just gonna help add uh you know, more services to our students in the world of mental health and counseling supports. So it's a good start. Yes, Phil and Jamie.
Do you have the details on the construct, are they gonna be in the Monday to Friday and what area?
Not yet, Joe, that's, yeah, that's um, I would like to say five days a week, um it would be the plan. Um but we haven't drilled down as of yet as to exactly how many days we assume, but the plan would be that, five days a week, that's.
Probably starting in September though, they will be in place.
Exactly.
Next September.
Exactly, so you have to work on that.
Space, there's space there in this building.
Yep, we've already worked on this as well, we're showing on space, but we're gonna find the space, so Mrs. Kelly's already investigating that and uh we will have a space.
How many practitioners have you got in the Sunday children's?
It'll start with one, and then we'll have to grow it from there. So, as quickly as possible, that's the goal, we just have to get students, you know, into the um process, so it can be funded.
Well, then you can walk in on by themselves.
Eventually, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, that would be uh what we would want to have happen, as as well as work with the families and et cetera.
So, couple of questions, during the school day, after the school day, or a hybrid of both?
Right now, during the school day, um we'll see about expansion.
So they they could be be scheduled during a class or during a free time?
Well.
Fine, I'm picturing, trying to picture it in my head.
Yeah, they they could schedule a time during their study hall, as soon as the study hall, or if there's a crisis of sorts, they would go, could go directly down. Um it says split and shared time between either one of our counselors or forming that relationship with a counselor now from CHC.
And CHC is providing the counselor?
Yes.
And they're doing the standard educational background checks and everything.
They would have to do everything.
Okay, um and I'm gonna say I know how hard it is to find some counselor or therapist right now, it's impossible to find somebody, they have no time for anybody. Um, they don't, counselors are really hard to get.
Very hard, yes.
Therapist in general, you can't get an appointment. Um. Do we, I mean, I know that we already have problems with our students getting in to see counselors and therapists, and I know the person we have at Park and Rec, that person has a long waiting list.
Yeah.
Um I'm foreseeing the same thing here, probably.
Yeah, that's.
So, so my question was going to be like, is CHC gonna have a hard time finding people, because I mean, I know like teachers, therapists have been just dropping like flies, like.
They have not said anything about difficulty in.
You're going to use this, just my experience of working with CHCs, but they tend to, what they tend to get is a lot of students that are just out of graduate school or a couple of years out of graduate school. And then those people will work and they're very dedicated, more than likely they'll stay because it's, you've got to be a special person to work with the community health center, in my experience, so I I don't think they'll, I don't think there'll be any problem, thing will be is when it come a point when we transfer them over on a total care seat to even parents, change them to the appointments, but there's a lot.
Yeah, the expansion possibilities.
Hoping that we don't start it and then we can't get somebody staffing it, like.
I would hope, I would hope that they would, before, yeah, we we get even to that point, they've got that person ready to go, commitment, um that's what we'd be looking for, in the worst case, that's when we start and then leave us.
And you don't wanna have turnover in it.
Yeah, that's the last thing, especially in the world of supporting, you know, counseling and mental health supports. Um students become attached and that's important. So I will be, once we have the full parameters, uh I will bring that forward, maybe even have CHC come and talk a little bit further about it.
So can I clarify what it is you're looking for us from tonight?
In in action to begin those discussions. Exactly, to go into those initial proposal stage of, you know, formulating a partnership, and then I would bring that back, well, to the board of kind of finals.
What are the fees for twenty-two thousand, what is that thing?
That that covers the cost of the person.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why I'd be cautious, because you have multiple people right out of the gate, we're gonna be funding it because they have to get that initial startup. So there's where we're gonna have to cover those initial fees, and I'm using that rough estimate of twenty-two, it could it could vary, but that was a number that they gave, uh they gave us.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's exciting.
It's extremely exciting.
Yeah, so it's it's the start that we we wanted and uh wanna grow it from there. Um so, that'll be the work.
Very good.
That's great.
Great, so does anyone want to make a motion?
I will, but I'm gonna change it up a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to have the superintendent engage in conversations to establish a partnership between Community Health Center and Eastline Public Schools for the implementation of a student-based healthcare program at Eastline. A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, great, no, that's great, um a big step forward, so it's. That's great, okay, so moving on, uh discussion action items instructional. So first is discussion board of ed, initial twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four goal planning, so if everyone remembers um you know, six months ago or so, when we did the goal process, we said, let's start earlier. Um and let's kind of have a process to get to a point and with a with a goal for our goals before the school year or when the school year starts, we actually have our goals in place. And that we can kind of brainstorm more and make sure there's outcome metrics uh or desired outcomes or something along those those lines, so um this topic is just, so we're, we have our workshop on June nineteenth, so we're gonna wait till the school year graduation of the fourteenth, right?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Middle schools.
Oh, sorry, no, yeah, middle schools fourteen.
Middle schools fourteen, fifteen, one thing Thursday. So uh the nineteenth, school's out, so we don't have kind of that day-to-day stuff, and I think we have a little more time so we can think about what our goals are. Um, so that's the the nineteenth brainstorm a bit, have our workshop brainstorm. Then in July, or depending where we are, the July meeting, we can iterate a little bit, so kind of have a little time to think about it, come back, iterate over the summer, maybe once, maybe twice, but then by September, where the school year starts, we actually have our goals, or we go and approve our goals, so that's the the hope for the plan. Um and it gives us a little more time, and if we do them over the summer, there's not other things, well, there's personal things going on, but uh not not school, as much school, so that was the thought, so they ask or request now, one is any questions, and two is just if between now and June nineteenth, over the next few weeks, you know, think about what types of goals or is there any things that you want um to look at our goals from this year, but remember our goals this year, we didn't have the desired outcomes, outcome metric piece to it, we just were rushing to kind of, it was already, I can't remember, November, December, by the time we asked for that. Um so this year, if spend, so we can spend a little time, do some thinking around um what an outcome metric might look like for a given goal as well. Um not that you need all the answers or anything by the nineteenth, but just if you can do a little thinking about um about that, that would be great, so um thoughts, questions?
Eric, are you thinking six o'clock on the nineteenth?
We have, it is a meeting, yeah, we have a meeting scheduled for that day, so I think we have, we're gonna go through te- test scores.
Exactly, recent formative and summative assessment reviews um that in at least um is working on. Um so we can bring some uh some final ending of your data to you, that would be the only agenda item, it would be the plan, and then we could roll into.
A workshop.
Yeah.
And we thought that that actually feeds in well with the goals, as you start seeing some data and information, kind of lets you think about what goals you make thinking about for the following year.
Could you help us with that a little bit, I think just maybe ask clarifying questions, so we or at least I would have a sense of what you want me to be thinking about, so that I could provide something that's kind of substantial rather than vague, I'm not sure exactly whatever.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I'm open to anybody else's thoughts, I mean, we can start and think about our goals from this year. Do you want some examples of what like a an outcome metric might look like?
We never got to goals this year, though, we.
Well, we have goals, we just don't have desired outcome, outcome metric, we don't have the measurable piece to it, we have the um, we do have the goal.
So we would be reestablished, we would be establishing goals for next year earlier.
My year, yeah.
But. Okay.
No, go ahead.
Well. Okay, so are we going to be establishing our goals in a month or?
Yes, so I'll go, so the nineteenth is that, the what I'm asking between now and the nineteenth is just, you know, think a little bit, we can send the goals from last time, even just think about what are some outcomes that you might be hopeful for. The nineteenth is is free, we're gonna, it's really an open discussion about areas, and it could be very specific.
Well, I think that's really good, and I think that's what, they're all a group of divergent thinkers, and when we get together, we just the sky's the limit for what we come.
And I think for the nineteenth, a little bit of that's okay, because let's brainstorm a bit and allow that kind of openness, but then we do wanna start locking, and that's where the July aug- in August is, now we have that list, let's see if we can collectively take a little time, you step back, you think about it, and think about your own prioritization, whatever, and then kind of pick some goal, Ju- July, August, to implement, to finalize goals.
So I'll I'll tell you what I think would help, if you would let us know what we picked for our goals, because I'm vague on what that was, and if we could just come up individually with anecdotal evidence that would support our process toward achievement of those goals that we identified for this year. And then from that, then we would be able to take our next step for what we would be working on, and then how we would measure it maybe more effectively. That's what I would suggest, if that makes sense.
It does, I'm just trying to think of the next, so so we'll send out the goals, we can share the goals, so everybody has them, so I think that's a joy from that what we had this year. And then, I just wanna make sure, did you want?
Well, then each of us could review them, and then we could say, well, I thought we did a really, like me personally, I would say, I think we did a really good job on these ideas, and this is some evidence that would support that, so anecdotal notes. And then from that, then I think we can identify more clearly how we would delineate and differentiate and see like we're we're doing it, we're hitting the ball out of the park, or
Yeah.
we need to, you know, work on some steps to get there.
Makes total sense, and I I think where we may, as you start looking at the goals from this year, the goals might not change dramatically for next year. But adding that outcome metric of what's a desired outcome, what are the outcomes that you want, that's gonna change, could change a lot, so we can look at what does each of these goals really mean, because that kind of lays out what are you really trying to get to with each of those goals versus the.
I just think it would help, but at the least for me, I can't speak for anybody but me, um the clarification piece, it is really.
And I think that I um agree, ready to kind of bring a little bit more structure to the process and just to comment, to maybe extend that a little bit is um, can totally appreciate, right, your comment on the, you're a thinker, you have a group of um just uh idea generators. And, and they are, I mean, and and definitely some really interesting and and good ideas on, and I think you know, in terms of kind of structuring that a little bit, as as this group is thinking about those and using the reflecting of the goals that we already have, um I think that that makes sense. Um. Tie it around kind of, um you know, so we can align around like the objective of, you know, the goals that we're striving to achieve without kind of um, you know, having to do all the homework per se, right, like I I think as we're thinking about, you know, what our objective is that of this goal that we wanna achieve, like what do we need to get there? Um in terms of, you know, we can realistically um do or what we would need to kind of make happen in order to kind of achieve those outcome metrics or or get there, so, you know, I think, I think we have some really sort of um, some are some definitely more tactical, right?
Yep.
But then some are 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 very aspirational, they they have a whole different looking field, and I think it's probably a good idea to keep both of those right behind the goal in order, um you know, we have policy as major, you know, kind of technical goal, and
Yep.
there was um, you know, we drove that to um completion, right, and but policy doesn't start to come off the table, right, so there's um, you know, and I didn't, you know, I think rather than give that start to kind of what what it's of um, goal opportunities are, which are kind of.
Yeah, but I think, you know, as I reflect on what you're saying, you're right, there's gonna be some goals like policy, you're right, tact, like we could lay out, we wanna have the one thousand series reviewed by this day, two thousand, I mean, those are metrics, to get them done, here, here's what we want to review, if you get them done, and so some of them are gonna be a lot less, or a little more kind of thought, strategic or thoughtful, or whatever words you wanna use in terms of the big picture. And uh your outcome metrics may look a little little different than that, but then you might have the tactics that the piece to get between the goal and the outcome metric is a series of tactics.
Yeah, I know. One of those tactics that we can attach to some of those goals.
Right, you're right, right. We.
Can you tell that I'm?
Waiting.
Um, this is still a half-baked thought, uh and I don't know the degree to which we as a board want our goals to be very tightly tied to the individual or like district school improvement plans that our admin are working on. Um, if we are kind of indexing for the latter, I do think it would be helpful to know, like from each of our school admin, what are the top two things that are keeping you up at night about next school year? Or, we're gonna limit it to two, because I wanna keep us narrow and focused, but, or you know, what's like, if you had to pick two to three things that you want to just level up and execute excellently next year, what are those things? Because I think, you know, there's different hats that we wear as board members, and at the end of the day, like we're not the practitioners that are in schools, we don't have that like intimate knowledge of, you know, the day-to-day on the ground, and so I I don't wanna create additional work for admin at this point in time, and I do think there might be some merit in at least a few of our goals, I know we're gonna try to keep them limited this year, but um really being intentional, intentional about having them be like closely aligned and in service of what our admin is really looking to achieve.
Good, good, good piece, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. Other thoughts?
Completely resonant about the statement that you just had, and I'm thinking about, you know, is that could be incorporated as like one of our objectives that we're, you know, saying, so where they, where they are tying to, and helping us choose those priorities and that.
You have that?
Yeah, definitely.
So, um in terms of next steps or actions, so we'll send out the goal to everyone from this year, so everybody has those readily available. We'll ask uh the administration to come up with, in their respective roles, what are the top couple of areas that keep them up at night, or they really wanna make a big, will have a big impact or change, or something that they really care about? You know, they expanded and just, yeah, okay, so what are, what are the couple ideas, the two things that you really um are thinking about, and and especially ones if you can, if there's anything where the board event can really have an impact with you and help you and partner with you on that. Um and then, we'll try to collect that, well, we'll send out the goals and we'll try to collect that information. And then for the nineteenth, we can have that information, and everybody has started to do some thinking, we'll send out the we'll send out the goals soon, and then we'll also send them as pre-read for the nineteenth, just so it's it's fresh in everybody's mind, and then we'll we'll go through the nineteenth. Um. And the nineteenth will probably be, we probably will go in a lot of different. And the nineteenth will probably be, we probably will go in a lot of different ways, probably on the nineteenth. Um, but the hope by the end of the nineteenth, we start to have some focus. And then give us a chance to step back, catch your breath, reflect. And then go to the July meeting uh, where we can spend and and focus a little bit more. So work for all of them. Okay, so that's the goal planning, so then um. The next topic. Is somewhat, it's a. A little bit of a reflection. On the past six or nine, six or eight months or whatever. You know, talking to, think number you at different times, one of the things, you know, we are, we we spent a lot of time together, but it was a lot of time almost on. Exclusively on budget and solving the budget. And. The meeting, our last meeting where we had the um. Middle school talk about the fifth grade and the strategy. That was for me one of the best meetings we've had in a long time, because we were talking about education and things and impact that really make a difference other than budget. Which was. Um. You know, it was exciting to me and and. And so I, you know, was doing some reflecting and talked with Jeff a little bit about, you know, do we need a more systematic approach to our agendas? So we don't. Get sidetracked too far. When a topic comes up, which happens to be budget or whatever, but there's some things that we do need to kind of keep going, so. I put a first pass draft, whatever uh, together of some topics that of just. What we want on our agendas and and this, we can delete, add um, augment in any way. Um, but just came up with some ideas and I'll I'll just um. Pass those around. Short one. Here.
You share this too?
Yeah, we'll share it um. Man, it's we're gonna share it electronically as well.
Chris, could you uh, just give me permission to? Share my screen? If you don't mind. Chris, could you hear, can you hear me? Oh, there we go, thank you.
Okay, so um, here's just some thoughts. And um, interested in others, so we just talked about the first one, which is goals, and in general, so each year, if this works uh, this year. You know, brainstorm workshop in June, revise in July, August. And finalize, of course, at the first board meeting of the new school year, so that would kind of be our cadence, hopefully from a goals, we just have a discussion at that first. Next, um, one reflection on the the budget is each year we go and start having a discussion in November. And some of the ideas we come up with might take twelve or twenty-four months to implement. And we talk in November. And we say, oh, that would that would be interesting, but there's no way we can implement it for the next year, so then we kind of let it go, and then we go to the next. November, and we have that same idea, and then we kind of iterate, go go year after year. And saying, I don't know if we can do that, so having a a workshop in July, not. Rolling up what we had. You know, what the roll up looks like already, and I just really talking about, are there any big ideas as we think about our. District that we wanna think about that could be. Do differently or take it up, just as an example, which is one we've talked about before is. Can you offer an AP class across districts or something like, there's some AP classes we don't offer that other schools do, can we? Have a a class that is virtual that we would offer that. Waterford, I'm making this up, Waterford has AP macroeconomics and we don't. Can we offer AP macroeconomics to our students as well, it might be taught by a Waterford teacher or something, but it kind of expand our curriculum. It could be something like that, like how, what would we need to do to do that now? To give an example is. We have different block schedules, so if you're doing it during the year, it actually means you gotta change block schedule, all that stuff, well, that. Takes a while to implement and everything, so those are the the types of ideas. Um, and just have some type of brainstorm, and then also in that discussion. Take a. We for this July, um, take a look at our budget from this past year. And do we wanna, we've used this process for a few years, but. I don't know if we wanna take a fresh look at it and maybe take a change for kind of how we do the budget. Um. Another reflection, bullet three, is one of the things, again with the middle school update. From last meeting is there's a couple, you know. For those of us who don't have students in that. In that particular school, or it's been a little while. Sometimes we lose track of what. How, what's even going on in the school in terms of. Oh, how many Kivas are there and what are, you know, I know we. Kind of can't remember, and what's that, is there looping, is there not looping, like, we we lose track of all of that, and um. So getting, you know, having regular updates from each of the principals um, on a quarterly basis, you rotate each one, so it's not. To make our meetings, uh, you could have. You know, January high school, February middle school, March elementary or something like that, but that's just, again, a thought. Um. Another thought is around our committee meetings. And we have. I think we sometimes struggle with our committee meetings starting at four thirty, I think we struggle to get. It's tough to get here in time, when we do have our meeting scheduled at four thirty, that means that. You know, by eight o'clock, some people have been here three and a half hours already, and you start to burn out and get tired, and it impacts our regular meetings. But, and again, this is, we can brainstorm on this as well, but a thought is. We, I think, I know for me, and I think I is that Mondays are are board of ed nights, so every, you know. Family, whatever, everybody knows Monday, it isn't always a board of at night, but everybody knows, don't do any, you know, Mondays, I'm occupied unless I say I'm not. And so can we uh, maybe have regular meetings on. The one Monday and the other Monday, maybe you have committee meetings, and we're not all in all the different committees, so it wouldn't mean that every Monday you have a meeting. But just so that. You can have focused time and maybe pressure time on that, again. Just. And I don't know if this is, these are the right things, I just wanna try to get, again, a more systematic way of of doing our. Agenda, and then some other updates, we have have now a full-time athletic director, having an athletic director come and give us updates uh, more frequently, we have. Uh, Chris gives some updates, uh, director of facilities and getting updates from him as well, and then aquatics, food services. Maybe a couple of times a year, give updates, but kind of lay those out, there might be others, might not agree with some of these, but. That the the thought is to almost have a schedule of a calendar of. This is when we do these uh, different items and then. And not lose this, and then as other things come in, they fill in obviously other pieces of the meeting, um. So I don't know if that made any sense, but interested in anyone's thoughts, comments. Just overall.
I think it's some good thinking and planning, I think you're on the right track. And I think that for others, I think the consent agenda, we can use that more than we do already, but just. Add things to that to expedite. Our process as much as possible, I think the deliberation discussions are good, but sometimes. We don't really need to talk about some things, if whatever that's the case, I think, put those on the consent. But I think you're. You're doing a good job there, so thank you.
If I can just uh.
I just, I think it's a great list for us to start thinking about either. Um. You've done a lot of um. Think kind of structured thinking and and also kind of getting ahead. Of um. You know, just to kind of have an idea of where we'd be going with agendas going forward. And maybe also kind of build in some opportunity for sort of. You know, pre-thinking about what we wanna see out of those agenda items. Um. So try. Yeah, as you're kind of going through, um. You know, thinking about. You know, just kind of building these out a little bit. You know, whether it's kind of stemming from something you're thinking about, or maybe a little bit different, or. So, you know, I think if we could talk about how. We. Wanna kind of carve some of these things out.
Yeah.
To, this is, I, but I like the. The the list, and you know, it's getting us thinking, I think, about some of the right things.
And if this is a direction we would have interest in. We can have a workshop. I don't know if we have a retreat workshop, whatever, where we can talk about us as a board and. Scheduling things out and being a little more um, be a little structured around topics and.
So I'm gonna go under other, one of my favorite things when I first joined the board was the board event used to go to all the schools. And we used to get presentations from the students. And I know now us being live and everything, it causes a little bit of a logistics problem, but if we could get the students in here to talk to us. About what they're doing. Or what they're not doing and what they like to be doing. I'd love to hear the student voices in here. And bring back those kids that we used to do, so what do, I'm just curious, what did they talk about? So when. When I first came on board, we would go to each school, um, and the principals in the city would put on a presentation for us. When we're the middle school kids talked about uh, Skyping. With service people in overseas, uh, the little kids, when I remember going to Flanders and they taught us how to dissect a frog on the. Old boards, they interviewed us for the news radio station, it was just all these cool things that the students did with us. So we could see what they were doing and we could hear their voices. So if we could get them back in here to talk to us again, I would love that.
That's a great, and that's on, so that's a different than what we have. The current. Um. What do we call them, special representatives uh, coming, and we're just telling us. More value, this is about like present, like use content.
Interact with us and show us what they were learning.
Yes.
Um, like when they showed us how to dissect the frog on the screen, I was like, holy cow, there's no blood, there's no smell, it's great. And it stinks, it's like.
I'll die, yes.
They just do. And they showed you how to do it, they interviewed you for their radio station, it was. Great to talk to the kids and see what they were doing, and I miss that.
Yeah.
And I'd love if we could bring that back.
That's great.
But would that be okay with the staff, the teaching staff?
Well, I think it would, yeah.
Okay, no, no, I'm just like.
Yeah, especially students, students love to. Come and kind of present.
Oh, I know, soon, so I'm just.
You know, um. It would be fantastic, can, yeah, I I was just gonna add, I mean, I I I like this because we kind of, you know, it is that winter. Snapshot of like, you know, December or January, I should say, through like March, where we just get consumed with budget, and I feel like we. We decided most other agenda items and like seven things that are happening in schools.
Purpose is the kids. So if we could get them in here to remind them and remind everybody else what our purpose is, I would, I would like that.
It brings energy. The, yeah.
And it just reminds you why you're here. Let's say one other thing, I I would really like that as an individual. This is just my, is periodically have an opportunity to just go sit in a classroom, pretend I'm a mom and I'm visiting the classroom today. I don't know if they still do that in elementaries anymore, or you don't?
We can set up, we can set up visits though, Joe, we did that, um. You know, sure, yeah, back in October.
Why don't we do that anymore? That was like huge.
We parents go and.
Issues.
Yeah, yeah, sec- security, we, yeah, we don't really, yeah.
Yeah, I was saying, when I was in the elevator, I guess.
But we can.
I assume that was.
Let's set up another, another visit.
You know, I mean, I just wanna sit in the classroom, I always serve, so I know what's going on.
It's fun. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, can you?
To do it. I would. I would die.
Yeah.
It's worth a thousand words.
Um, so you're saying we get permission?
No, he's saying.
He'll set up. I'll, I'll set up, so, yes.
I mean. Well, I should. On this.
Yes, Ross.
But still, though, it would, if, you know. It would be nice if there was a special. Event, you know, we're invited to the veterans event over at the middle school, which is really nice, but then also, if there was something like. Like a little play, or if there's, you know, now is when they're doing their um, choral singing and that kind of thing. To show up as a board member would be really fun, and and I remember going to my kids' concerts, definitely. We don't do that, we don't have that opportunity in the ship.
Yeah, as a as a non-parent, you're not, you don't have that, you don't have an idea what's going on.
And that's not, and that's not classroom, that's just events. Yeah, I went to a classroom. You got to be a instructor, I'm trying to get you in there. I've been to the staffers and students volleyball every day at middle school.
Yeah, dodgeball, I think it was dodgeball, isn't it, or that uh, staff or students, volleyball.
Volleyball.
Dodgeball might not be good.
I know.
It was in, it was like a news letter.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
It's a very proud.
With the job event? No, but it was teacher versus staff, staff versus student volleyball tournament, and who won, so students.
So you wanna take on the teachers? No, 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 no. Students, baby, teachers.
Students will be teachers.
Uh.
Okay, so this is under consideration, I know I'm pushing hard on this. And I may be the only board member, but.
No, it ties in.
We did it, we did it in the spring or in the fall to highlight the coaches and the work that they do in the classroom.
So, was it a tour, or did, were you allowed to stay for an hour or two?
We did, well, we did some rotations through classrooms to see a co- you know, we had a meeting, we talked about what we were gonna stop, we used the lens of the coaching cycle to go in. So that you guys had an opportunity to see, you know, when we're talking about coaching, what does that actually look like in the classroom? And we can do that again, but there's other. And. There's some other areas, depending on where we had, we land with board goals, we might wanna align visits to the board goals and. Give you guys some context around some of the work.
If I was a parent, and I'm just curious, I'm a little young, I apologize. As a parent. Could I come in and serve if I ever wanted to, or is that totally?
You have a, you have a board of a policy around that, twelve, twelve, twenty-five, actually, this is Shomen, I just talked a little bit about it today. So there's a whole policy and regulation around visitations and. That, you know. Why reasons, educational disruption, good, bad.
Fingerprints, background check.
Uh, all of the above, potentially, yeah.
That means our.
Depending on, depending on what.
We.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Um. Why don't everybody do some thinking on this, we can bring this up as another topic, think if there are some things that we do want to make sure, like about. Student presentations and presenting. Showing that we had consent agenda, these other items, if there are things that we wanted here or do and where we actually. Have more of a board event calendar, um. That obviously gets filled with other things as well, but just have a recurring uh, systematic way of approach, that would be great, so uh, what. We can kind of move on now, but if everybody does some thinking and we can talk about it another time as well. Okay.
What would be your, I guess I'm curious, so I, I'm a, my two cents, big fan of the structure, love that there's like a huge proactive emphasis on this. In your ideal world, what would be like the ideal timeline for us to say, okay, we're gonna kick off this new structure?
For this school, new school year.
Okay, so we're talking, what's that?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of, as you probably are seeing with gold there, and starting to think is, you know, approaching the summer, and like, if September, even though our school year or. Our calendar technically starts July first, our real year is. Whenever the school starts, end of August, early November, yeah. Great.
Let's do it.
Okay. Okay, now we are moving on to discussion act, kind of policy, and we said, we're gonna lead us through. Um. Re- first reviews, yeah.
Yeah, I think these are just first review, they don't.
Yeah, they're all, yeah.
Um. Motion, so the first set is uh, first you suggested first review for policies in the one thousand. Series, um, they, there's two policies there, um, thirteen, twenty-five. Advertising promotion, personal activities of thirteen, thirty. Community use of school facilities, um, provide common teaches and suggestions back to. Um, Jeff. There's.
Uh, just one comment on the thirteen, twenty-five, if you remember, as part of. FFO, we talked about um. Uh, advertise or marketing and branding, and we kind of had two actions, one was, which is to look at our social media, which uh, has been. Uh has been done and or being addressed and being looked at and the others, make sure our policies are in place. That if we want to start having some advertising, what comes on. So thirteen twenty-five is important for that. Part of that discussion, so everyone gets a chance to read it because we do want to hopefully start using it.
Yeah, and I mean, we have to break. So we looked at it in April, but we didn't know that the, it was last revised in twenty twelve, so. Courtesy to. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah.
Um then next is in the six thousand series, uh first review. Um course, suggest revision and deep change um to bring it up to date in six one seventeen point three. Equivalent education under practical direction. And then there are. There is one in the nine thousand series. First review or suggested revision of policy number nine three two five meeting.
Any questions, comments? Okay, uh that closes our discussion action items for the meeting and moving on to. Administration reports and Jeff.
Yeah, a couple items, uh the first being uh. Dr. London and I, Chris have been uh in conversations, um Chris more importantly with uh Salem recently about the idea of. Potentially overseeing um Salem's facilities and operations, kind of like what we have with food services. Um looking at at a mouse, so Chris has spent. Uh two separate occasions now, Chris, I'll let you kind of share, Chris, uh and obviously more. Further discussions have to be had and and you know, for the partnership and this really should go to FFO to start, so we will start it at our next FFO meeting. But. You know, Chris has provided some analysis work for Salem already, um kind of he went up and visited the school, the school. And uh looked around and. Found what deficiencies are are present, what's good, what's bad, what's working. Um so. You know, in a nutshell, we're looking at the idea potentially of of a partnership that would uh. You know, Sam would pay us for potential, some potential oversight. How that's defined is still need, still needs to be discussed with the board and FFO and Chris and I had a conversation with Brian Hendrickson today. Um about that, so um a second, a third conversation, really. So Chris, anything you wanna add to that, you know, for now? Yeah, so that's kind of where we're uh, where initial conversations are being had. We'll see, uh bring that to FFO for some further conversation, but. Um Chris, for something that we'll be updating to is some of the conversations for. Being uh being discussed, so it'll be an exciting opportunity, potentially. So that's uh underway, um. We talked a little bit about that policy, you know, thirteen twenty-five and and marketing, Marianne and I, um we went back a couple years back. Uh it just never got off the ground where we kind of halted because of logos. We we stopped the board, now we adopted, we didn't want, we got nervous about what logos we could. Potentially see putting on the field or not putting on the field. But we we need and hence the change in this and adjustments this policy, it it's, we need to move in that direction, starting to. Look at raising some dollars and and having scoreboards. Uh new scoreboard, we need new scoreboard for the baseball field and this new scoreboard for the football field as well. So marketing that out and having some, you know, whether it be Dunkin' Donuts as an example, or some other. You know, branding that's associated with it would help offset the cost. So there's a company that uh we're investigating a little bit further. And that's another piece we'll talk about it at FFO or next FFO meeting.
I contacted them, um because I think the old, um that old email address I had. Probably that was inside there anymore.
Yeah.
It's worked well for Stone.
Stonington, yeah, done it, yeah. So we we've been able to be in touch with Stonington to see um what's the um. Um the benefit of uh, that they've been with doing it for years now and they reap some benefits uh coming. So. We're gonna be looking into that, so that'll open up at FFO as well. Uh additionally, a great uh opportunity to be on the baseball field again, so. Yeah, it was, it was really nice, uh we get to see the home run, um and so I, Chris, we were over there. Oh, yeah. Yep, so we get to see that. Uh so it's great, it's great to see the kids back on that field, that they were excited. Um and we will now, you know, kind of shut it back down. It's not gonna be used this summer. Uh at all, and we'll let the grass really grow in and then we'll be ready to go uh for for next year. So we're excited about that. So, yeah, so that.
One question on the baseball field, how do we keep the geese off?
That's a great question.
Yeah, those plastic. And well, they don't really work. Yep, they're, they work for a day or two and then they don't really work.
He's get used to it.
Any air can. Yeah. Let it run around the border collie or whatever it is.
Mascot, I don't know.
Get the bird sounds from here over to there, will that help?
Does our new athletic director have a dog? He can just let it run down there.
Worth a shot, maybe just dog barking sneakers. Dog barking sneakers.
It is a field, so you know, we can just make sure, you know, clean up the geese, so you know, ahead of time sort of thing, but. So, yeah, I.
Yeah, I don't know.
The plastic coyotes never worked.
No, no, twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, they figure it out.
We've had plastic coyotes out there for years.
Yeah. Move them around. Someone's gotta make one of those plastic coyotes that actually moves around when.
Let it bowl the lawn too, it's out there, you know.
Get some robotic coyote that barks at them.
Something where it tries to move. That's um, that's it for now, um so and Lisa.
Um as you heard from the student reps, our summative assessment sea- season is. Uh coming to an end, thankfully, students did a great job. Um as Jeff said, I'll share some um more formative assessment data, some of the smaller assessments that we use, the benchmark data. So um just kind of overview of that, what that looks like, how we use that data. Um and look at some data patterns, so I'll be bringing that to you in June. Um I just want to thank the building administrators with regards to the end of year events, um so really fun time of year to be out of. Um the office behind the computer and sort of. Celebrating the year-long success, the hard work, the energy, the effort that um students have put into whatever it might be, chorus, band. Um art, you know, and I know it's a. It's a lot of work for them too, and um so just wanna say thank you to them and also. Also the students who work so hard. So it's been great, it's been a lot of fun. I think like like last week it started to ramp up and. Um you know, Jeff and I have been out and about and it's been, it's been really the highlight of my day, so. In terms of tech, I just want to give the board a heads up. We are, we are looking at replacing um student devices with Chromebooks. Instead of laptops moving forward. So um I did. Uh survey our curriculum fellows and our curriculum instructional leaders um to start, that's a group of fifteen. Sort of curriculum leaders in the district to see. You know, what are their thoughts? Do they feel as though it would impact? And um thirteen out of the fifteen said, yes, we can transition to a Chromebook, no problem. Uh most of what we do in district is web-based. Uh there's just a few circumstances. So the two that said no have specific programs they run on the laptops. That they would need in the classrooms, which we could solve with just putting sets of, you know. Laptops in the, in the classroom to help move that forward. The cost of a Chromebook is about half the price of a cost of a laptop. And when we think about going into a one-to-one replacement cycle. With fidelity and longevity, you have to think about that in terms of a price point. Um. Most of the districts across the state use Chromebooks. We are one of the few that don't. So, um. I am going to put out a more comprehensive survey to, now that I know that, you know, if if all cur- all fifteen said, no, we can't do that. I probably would have, you know, not moved forward, but I will put out a more comprehensive. Uh survey to get a better sense of if everyone would be in support of that. Staff would remain um with laptops. It would just be for student use. Um. So I just want to give the board a heads up. If you have any questions, let me know. Uh we haven't made a final decision yet, but it is in consideration.
And that would be staggered, obviously, um in over the coming years with the replacement.
Right, we wouldn't be able to do everybody at once, but.
Yeah.
So one thing I had heard about Chromebooks, I've never had ones thrown on it. Is that they were, I use the word more fragile, or they broke more often, or anything like that? Is that, that's not an issue?
No, um.
That could have been very dated information.
I mean, computers are fragile and, you know, it doesn't matter what kind of computer you put it in the hands of um students, they're fragile and they do break. So, you know. Uh but our Microsoft license three sixty-five would still be accessible to students, so they still would have access to Microsoft and. Uh and Google, uh so they're not, they're not losing anything in the way of programming, uh it's just.
And they look exactly the same. Yeah, so no, no gray level is gonna be, you know, standing out as having a different color device or something, they all look the same, so. So.
That's it, that's all. Thank you. So just two things, so our depth, our our deficit is no longer a deficit, so. Roughly after my projections last week, um projecting about eighty thousand. Um again, you know, that's all dependent on utilities coming from estimating, but. Think we's are in a good position to um. Sorry, was that eighty thousand plus? Yeah, yeah, but so we're not in a deficit. Um position anymore, so I think that's good. I mean, we only have. A month and a half of school, so I don't anticipate that's changing all that much, um so um and then. We spoke with our custodian and secretary union, we're part gonna bring it forward to FFO, but we're. Looking into a, an early retirement um incentive. Um probably not for July first, but giving them an option of September first or January first. Um so um preparing that information now and we'll review it with FFO.
Thank you. I I have a good question. Does the resignation of the town finance director affect us in any way? Is that gonna affect us going forward until something's replaced?
I think it will, in my opinion.
I guess my question was. Is that spillover account that we're working on, it's gonna catch that if there's anything there or is that?
That was my question.
The non-lapsing.
Yeah.
Account, will we have it in place in time so that?
Well, so um we wouldn't. Uh yes, I think we should because um I'm estimating eighty thousand. So let's say we end the year on June thirtieth with eighty thousand. We still would have to wait for at least a minimum, I I don't want to say the audit because it's far behind. But I have to file any FS report, so I make sure that I'm completely reconciled. So that's September first, so at the latest, so at the earliest, we would not be able to make that determination. Until I file that report. Um with the state.
Perfect.
So I think we're in a very good position.
Okay. Good, good. Okay, um that closed administration reports, moving on to committee reports, and we had triple A today. Um Bill, and Alix.
Yeah, it was a uh shorter meeting focused um primarily on the social media. Um campaign proposal, we just basically read through that and and uh were in agreement that. Um organizing our social media and um. And getting everything under a a common name. Um. So that people who are going, I, to recap, I guess it was eighty. Or so um different pieces of social media out there, some of which are not under our umbrella. Most, so um so it's, it'd be nice to have parents and students know which um. Social media is actual official stuff and and we've got a naming protocol in. Um but forth, so.
Blue check mark.
So um I think that's, I think that's a great. Way to go to get um. Get things organized there, but it sounds like it's gonna be a little bit of uh PD involved in. Additional um. Work for.
Yeah, so. But needed. Yeah.
And it'll be good to learn what Kevin has learned in Killigley and what they're doing. Yeah.
Yeah, I I'm, I think um we're going to be. Uh uh. The climate culture thing, I think we gotta pull him into our meeting right away, because I think he's. Uh gonna be able to help us significantly with that.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on triple A? Policy. We didn't have one in between last meetings. Okay, we did have, I guess, the.
Had, it's my, like I said again, it's my favorite meeting, it's once a year, it's less than ten minutes. Um, we already talked about everything that was on there earlier in the evening, so. But it is my favorite ten-minute meeting one year.
And then Jamie, you want to get an update on?
Uh Kate, Kate is currently looking for resolutions. Uh I don't have the deadline date off the top of my head, but. So the resolution, the things that go to delegate assembly for. Um the delegates to vote on whether or not you'd like Kate to pursue it with the legislature in the legislative session. That deadline is soon, I just don't know it off the top of my head. Um and I'll have a state relations committee meeting. June twentieth, where we talk about the things that are currently being passed or not passed. Um in the legislative session.
You've got any poll to the middle school um is submitting, now they're submitting um the music department for. See if we could maybe have our students present at the K gaps convention.
Yeah, they're gonna be putting together a video presentation, but.
Yeah, it's been by June sixth, I think, or June, yeah, so.
I know the president.
Yeah, I don't know if Eastland has ever had students, but I I we've tried in the past and have been successful, so.
Well, I'll see.
Yeah. Yep. Just a little flood.
I'll see what I do.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yep.
And Kate, anything from Lauren?
Jill's been going in my absence.
Oh my gosh, yes.
I know that Kate went to um. China, is it China or Japan? And she came back and had an amazing trip and experience over there.
Kate Erickson, the director.
No, I I know who it is, it's just.
Oh, we didn't, I I don't know that I. Kate Erickson's the director of Learn, that's who you're representing.
I didn't know if you were talking to her by yourself in the third person.
No, they're just, they're a dynamic group. I'll be honest with you, it was all over my head and hard to keep up with because I didn't have a historical perspective. But what's amazing is uh just the things they're doing in the area. And the students that they're serving, so I don't really have anything profound to say, because I said, I was in over my head, but I was there.
The collegiality, I think, is remarkable, doesn't matter what what town you're from, but. People come to the table, working, focused on solving the problem regardless of who you are, where you're from, but taking everybody's input. Using it judiciously and kindly and wisely, so it's a great group.
Always more town, get more people, not all the towns always show up at the same time. Which is really too, really too bad, but it's amazing.
Okay, so I close our committee reports, uh any more in common future agenda items?
I did hear from one student that wrote and he was indicating that he wished that there were more classes, so. And I know it's tough budgetary times and we have our restrictions, but that was a voice that came to me. That we need to always think if we're cutting, how we can. Implement somehow.
Okay, we do have uh an executive session item. To discuss uh the proposed performance evaluation for ELP as superintendent for the. Twenty-two, twenty-three schooling year. Twenty-two, twenty-three schooling year. Do I hear? Motion.
I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to include superintendent, who can put the purpose of discussing his proposed performance evaluation for twenty-twenty-three school year.
Seconded by Katie. Uh, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Suppose they. Candace, I'll call you again. We're gonna stay here.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.